Call the City of Elkhorn Common Council, October 17th, 5:30 meeting to order. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Bruce Lechner.
Here.
Tim Sharoda.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.
Here.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Here.
Scott McLaurie is absent. Ken Minell.
Here.
Carol Young.
Here.
Next, we have public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? If nobody's here for public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes, the Common Council, October 3rd, 2022, Human Resources, October 11th, 2022, and a temporary Class B beer license for the Walworth County Agricultural Society at the Walworth County Fairgrounds for Rodeo Dance on November 13th, 2022, 1 to 9 p.m. Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion on any of these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for the consent agenda. Next, we have bills payable, consideration and recommendation to pay. The bills are $2,344,785.06. Everybody had them in their packet? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the set amount.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? Any of the bills in your packet? Roll call, please.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Motion passed to pay the bills. Next, report of city officers. Mayor, the only thing I have is I'd like to thank the Chamber and Chris for great Oktoberfest weekend. Seen town was real busy and great weather, and I think it was a good turnout, so... Next, Adam?
Just a few things here. One, I just wanted to, quick update. Our city lineman, Kent Truckee, did return back to the city after helping with, providing mutual aid down in Florida. He said it was a great experience and he would do it again. He said that, you know, it's long hours, a lot of work, but that it was rewarding being able to help others in time of need. So, again, thanks to Kent Truckee for representing the city on that. We're gonna have a new zoning administrator starting in November. Current zoning administrator, Bonnie Schaefer, resigned to pursue other endeavors and do want to thank her for working for the city for 12 years. Technically, she was a contract employee, not really employee, but she was contracted to serve the city. But do want to thank her for all of her service. She'll be replaced by Allison Schwark, who's currently providing code enforcement services for the city. We're gonna have a public hearing actually on the new, on the proposed comp plan amendment and rezoning for Tronomy for the Creekside Development at the next Plan and Commission meeting, which is on November 3rd. Speaking of meetings, just a reminder, the next Common Council meeting's actually gonna be on Wednesday, November 9th. So, it's got, it's been moved from Monday to Wednesday in order to accommodate the election. And a couple of quick other things, leaf collection starts this week, which is probably good because leaves seem to be coming down quickly now. And if you, if any of our residents have received a letter from HydroCorp, those letters are, I guess, legitimate. HydroCorp is doing the cross connection inspection for the water department and is replacing water meters. So, they've already had 100 scheduled last week, have 100 scheduled this week, and plant should be able to knock out the 400 this, by the end of this year. So, that seems to be going well. I know the water department's had one staff member accompanying each of the teams to help answer questions and to assist with the process, so it seems to be going smoothly. And lastly, I want to just defer to Lacy. Lacy, do you want to give an update about the election?
Sure. So, the election is three weeks away. The polls will be open here Tuesday, November 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Care facility voting began today in the city of Elkhorn and continues tomorrow. We are visiting for care facilities or retirement residence. In-person absentee voting begins next week, Tuesday, October 25th. It will be held in the committee room, which is right back there, from 9:00 to 4:00. And it runs next week, Tuesday to Friday, as well as the following week, Monday to Friday. If you know anyone who needs to register, the last day residents can register by mail or online through MyVote is this week, Wednesday, October 19th, which reminds me, I need to tell my son to hurry up and register. Thank you.
Is that it, Adam?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, committee reports. We have the Human Resource Committee. Recommendation regarding adoption and implementation of, excuse me, of step pay structure for 2023. I know this went to committee and it is a recommendation, correct? So, there'll be a resolution on the next meeting that we'll be able to vote on to approve this or move on. So, Adam's gonna be getting that done and it'll be on the next council meeting.
Do you want me to say anything or just...
If you'd like to, yeah.
Oh, sure. Of course, we met on October 11th. There were two agenda items, conducting a classification and compensation study in 2023 and adoption and implementation of step pay structure for 2023. The committee did not take any action on the first agenda item, conducting a classification and compensation study in 2023. The second agenda item, regarding adoption and implementation of a step pay structure for 2023, the committee approved adopting and implementing the proposed step pay structure and move it on to the full council.
Thank you, Carol. So, yeah, we'll see that next council meeting, so... Next, report on liaison committee meetings, fire advisory. I think we have a meeting the end of this month? Next week, yep. So, I don't know if you have any updates on anything going on with the towns?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, okay. So, we'll just move on to library.
Library met last Wednesday night. Couple highlights are the, the library had a very large turnout at the Walworth County Historical Society Program on paranormal activity at the old city hall. 120 ghost enthusiasts showed up for a fun and engaging program. And to finish out the month of October, they have some events coming up. On Friday, the 28th, they'll have a create a costume program for kids and families, followed by their teen haunted library event for middle and high schoolers at 6:00 p.m. Then, on the following Saturday, the next day, they'll have a spooky lights program where library users of all ages are invited to create gel candles and luminaries. And I'd also just like to take a second to thank Adam for coming to the library board meeting and going through the step pay structure with the library board. I think it was very helpful. And I've been hanging out at library board meetings, I think, for 20 years, and I believe he was the first city administrator to ever attend one.
Next, recreation advisory.
Yeah, the meeting for October has been postponed till November, and we do not have a date yet.
Chamber, I will defer to Chris. The norm.
Good evening. Bruce, thank you very much for attending Oktoberfest. And Ron, everyone else that joined, it was a great success. It was our 17th year and probably our largest year. We have some phenomenal drone shots and things like that to show what the city of Elkhorn can do. We could not do it. It takes a village to do things like this. Or in this case, it takes the city of Elkhorn. Because we had DPW, the police department, every part of the city assist us in this. Because the two individuals in our office, plus our amazing volunteers that we have, could not still pull it off without that. We did some quick math in excess to pull off that, you know, eight-hour day from 9:00 to 5:00, but all the prelim, you know, we probably have 1,000 hours in it of man-hours, you know, with volunteers and everything else. So, again, thank you, and we hope that everybody attended, enjoyed themselves. And as far as I know, I was at a meeting this morning and I passed and I was all good with all my requirements. So, we move on to our next events, which is the holiday season. You'll be seeing a request for, we're gonna start off a little bit earlier. I think it's the Saturday prior, I keep thinking the 25th or 26th, with a cocoa crawl, and then we'll start into the 12 Days of Christmas, which will lead to the tree lighting, let it glow, and we're trying to make it a 12 Days of Christmas. And if anybody has any insight or would like to help out with anything, please let us know. Or if the city, we were thinking, we heard this rumor that there might be some city vehicles, volunteers gonna be in the Christmas parade, yay. If they wanted to do one of the days, like a food drive, or we're talking, trying to get engaging businesses, you know, dress up, everybody wear, you know, their funny pajamas or something like that, just to be fun, let us know if we'd like to engage in that. Adam, come on, we gotta get something in there. But if you have any other requests or anything else, just so you know, in March, I'll try to see if Kate can stop, step in, but otherwise, I'm gonna send Ken an email. This Friday, I get my knee replaced, so I'll be out for a little bit, working from home. But if there's anything you need, you can always shoot an email or give Kate or I a call. You have our numbers. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have unfinished business. Discussion on possible decision regarding, excuse me, proposed mutual aid agreement between Walworth County, Waukemette, the towns, villages, and cities in Walworth County? You took a look at Word, correct?
I did, and I, hopefully, everybody's seen I sent a memo. And if anybody has any questions regarding the content of the memo, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I don't have any concerns about the mutual aid agreement.
Questions or concerns from council members? Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt for the mutual aid agreement. Next, new business. Discussion regarding revised conceptual plant, site plan by Kingdom Farms LLC for construction of cold storage facility at tax parcels, JG 7001, JG 0001B, and YA 31190002.
Thanks, Adam.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm Christina Green from Sweeten Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, and they're actually, the applicants are Special Teams LLC and US 52 Cherry LLC. Kingdom Farms was involved in the cold storage, but the owners of the real estate are now Special Teams LLC and US 52 Cherry. This is the annexation, proposed annexation, cold storage, self-storage facility that's been in front of you a couple times for concept review. And we are here again today mainly just discussing the access off of Highway H, actually, at the suggestion of Alderman Payson. I know there was some concern about Highway H access for the self-storage facility, and so I did meet with Alderman Payson. We did go out to the property. We looked at the possible locations. Since this is his constituents in this area, the concern is for his constituents, for the church to the north, for the people who use McLean Road. So, we needed to make sure that if we are gonna have access off Highway H, that it's in a location that's beneficial to everyone. I believe, and I will ask Alderman Payson to jump in, I believe we feel the access on the south, which is site plan page one in your packet and the top one on the board, is the one that was likely determined to be the best. That was the one that was determined by, well, preliminarily determined by Walworth County Highway Department. They said they felt that that one would probably be the best as well. But until we come forward with an actual application to the highway department and stake it out, they won't be able to say for certain, but they felt that one would be better, and they didn't really have a problem with either of the two locations. So, it's really a matter of getting your input, getting any input Alderman Payson may have been able to give from his constituents. And we were hoping maybe some of his constituents would show up, but I think he's made several attempts and they're not coming. So, just if there's any input from any of you, or again, from Alderman Payson on this, so...
Thanks, Christine. Just to kind of build on this, yes, we did spend time out there. Option one would be ideal. The thing to remember is that anybody's coming in with trailers or big trucks or whatever, that's gonna come through the industrial park. Off Highway H will only be for single car use, to come in and go into their storage facility or go to the office. We won't have any trailers or anything like that, so we won't have any traffic issues on Highway H, which is a big concern of mine and I'm sure the police department as well. The nice thing was, is when we were talking, I was concerned about the hill on Highway H, and the county did confirm that I am pretty good engineer, even though I don't play one anymore. So, so that was kind of nice to see, but overall, I think this is a great idea. Having a self-storage in the front is gonna guarantee that we don't have any industrial buildings or type of stuff that's gonna be close to the neighborhood, and everything for the cold storage is gonna be to back. So, I think it's a win-win for the city and for the neighborhood. And I appreciate Christina's time on all this. She spent a lot of time on this with me.
Members, any concerns? Option one look the best for the council, too? Does that work the best for you, too, then?
I believe it actually does work the best for us as well, so it's fine.
Other questions?
The entrance being limited, that'll be controlled by signage?
And gates.
And gates.
So, they will have like a double gate, so you won't be able to pull a truck in because a second gate will hit it before you get through. So, you, it'll be gates and signage. And then there is access off the industrial park for where you come in if you're pulling a trailer. And people will be told that as well when they rent the self-storage facility, certainly.
So, the RVs and boat storage in the back, they'll be coming through the industrial park?
Those will come through the industrial park, yes.
Questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Very much. I will see you, I think, in November.
Thanks, Christina.
Next, discussion on possible decision regarding the Lauderdale Farms LLC Ex-Territorial Platt Review Certified Survey Map. I know that got approved at Plan Commission, so it's brought to council. Questions on that in your packet? Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve Lauderdale Farms LLC Ex-Territorial Platt Review Certified Survey Map.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for the Lauderdale Farms LLC Certified Survey Map. Next, discussion on possible decision regarding the Harvest Point South HOA 801 North Wisconsin LLC rezoning Certified Survey Map in ordinance number 22-09. We can waive the first reading, go right into the second if we would like. Everybody seen that? Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion to waive the first reading? Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on any of those, the rezoning Certified Survey Map or ordinance number 22-09? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for waiving the first reading. Do I have a motion for the second reading? To adopt? Do we have a motion on the second reading? Do we have a, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for rezoning Certified Survey Map in ordinance number 22-09. Next, decision, discussion and possible decision regarding the Lauderdale Lakes Marina LLC conditional use permit for boat storage, display, and repair. That did come through Plan Commission and was approved with staff recommendations on that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any question or discussion on that?
My question is, and I think Ken probably knows the answer to this. There were some concerns back a few year ago, two years ago, about items for sale out on the highway. Is that changing with this?
No. No, but it's limited to boats.
Correct. It's, it's 10...
I know what, we had cars out there, there was piers out there, and that was not in their conditional use, so...
Close to be 10, 10 boats from, I think, April till October. And there's no sales on the property. They gotta go down to the marina north of there to do any sales.
That's what it was before. Of course, they didn't abide by it, and that stuff showed up. They were warned a couple of times. So, I think they, you know, lately, there was a truck out there for, I don't know, a couple of weeks. But I think with our enforcement person now that once, you know, they see that, I think we can get control. It's better than it was, Tim.
Good.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for Lauderdale Lakes Marina. You were with the HOA, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I'll sign it. That way, you don't have to wait. Yep, come on up.
I guess you gotta sign it now.
I don't know, we had a lot of lawyers in the room. Not all that one? Yep, you too. Next, discussion on possible decision regarding change order number one for 2022 Elkhorn Street and Parking Improvement Project at a cost of $30,114.19?
Yeah, we received a memo and a detailed breakdown of the change order, which is in the packet. The cost for this change order, again, is $30,000. I did talk to Mike about where we're sitting at with the project with regards to the initial contract amount. And with over-under runs and a consideration of those, we're coming in roughly $68,000 under our original budget. So, this wouldn't be a, any additional cost outside of the proposed contract amount. Just wanted to share that.
Anybody have any questions for Matt or Mike on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Motion passed for change order number one for the 2022 Elkhorn Street and Parking Improvements Project. Discussion on possible decision regarding renewal of Fremouth Farm lease agreement? Adam, you taking this, or...
Sure, I'll just jump in real quick. So, Matt alerted me to the fact that apparently we've had this agreement with Fremouth Farm to lease about 20-some city acres. And basically, it hasn't been updated in, actually, more than 20 acres, I should say. But it hasn't been updated since 2019, and under the, it's a year-to-year lease, and basically, it automatically renews unless the city or the farmer, you know, provide intent to terminate the lease. Just because it hasn't been updated or discussed with the council, we just wanted to bring it forward to see if you guys want to change anything before it renews again for '23. One thing would also be, you know, the rent hasn't been adjusted since April of '19, but again, that's just something to think about. So, I just wanted to put it on the agenda for council discussion.
Council members, any questions?
Are we happy with what we're getting for the lease right now, Matt?
Yeah.
That's fair?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not sure how, you know, back in 2019, how the rate was calculated, but I think it's a fair amount. I mean, it's, without Adam, without the Fremouth family taking care of it, it would be something that we would have to mow and maintain, and I think it's great that they're able to farm it, to continue to farm it.
Just rezoned that, am I right? Yeah, that was rezoned, that parcel? Yeah, because it was under, I think, commercial or light industrial, and we were actually leasing it out as something that was not, I guess. But, so, I'd be in favor of moving on that, make a motion to.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to renew the farm lease agreement? Any questions or concerns, discussion?
Just want to clarify, it's 36.72 acres, so...
36.72 acres? Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for the farm lease agreement. Next, discussion on possible decision regarding request for amendment number two to grant agreement, CDBG CLPF 21-20?
Met with MSA regarding our project, and it looks like they're gonna be near completion with the majority of the work by October 31st. But there are some doors and things like that, that they had a problem procuring, some material procuring issues. So, in order to make sure that we're compliant, we're looking to extend the contract from October 31st to November 30th.
Questions for Matt on that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend it from October 31st to November 30th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Hey, Rod, I just, going back to the fire advisory, we have a meeting next week, correct? Yep. Is there any updates on anything with the towns right now? Okay. Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to check since you came. Next, we have discussion and possible decision regarding proposal from KLM to install water mixers and SCADA control boxes at city's three water towers for a cost of $42,600? Do we have any questions for Tim on these, or anybody, council?
Tim, can you explain to everybody what this is for, please?
What they are, they're, they're a, it's a, it's a pump that will run nonstop 24 hours a day. We're getting, we're not getting enough water turnover in the tanks, and we've come to the conclusion that there's a biofilm or something in the tank because we can put fresh water into the tank at like a part and a half per million of chlorine, and within a couple hours, we can pull a sample out of there and it's less than .25. So, there's something in there that's eating, it's eating it. So, we did some research on it, and most communities with this situation have went to mixers. Ultimately, when you first put the mixers in, we're gonna, our chlorine usage is gonna go up a tad. But it's been proven within a couple months that your chlorine consumption then goes down to probably like 50%. So, in the long range, we're gonna get it all back in chlorine usage, or chlorine costs. Also, we were made aware that the surrounding states are going after making them mandatory for all towers for this reason. So, we're trying to get ahead of it also because as soon as it's mandatory...
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the $42,600.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion further? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passed for KLM for installation for $42,600. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding applying to host the wall that heals. I know Alderman Dunwoodie brought this to Adam and I's attention and wanted to brought up and.
Yeah, it was just something to be for consideration. If everyone knows what the Vietnam Wall is, that's out in G.C. What this is, is a miniature that's hauled by semi-truck and set up for a week. And it's about 230 feet long, the entire thing. But communities kind of apply for it to be at their location, a location that's suitable. There is quite a lengthy process for applying. But they are going to start taking applications for next year. I have discussed this with John Geezy, who is now currently the VFW commander here in town, also with the American Legion Commander. They're up for it. I did have been inviting them here to the council meeting for this to get their input. But I would just be wondering if the committee, if the council as a whole and the city would be interested in possibly applying to host this. It does take a lot of work, a lot of volunteers. There is a cost factor. $11,000 is required to host it, plus having a utility hookup for electricity and stuff like that. Adam actually got all the information together. It's, I have it in an email. We can get that printed out for it. But no, no, no decision tonight, obviously. But if it would be, if the city would be interested in it, then we'll start pursuing it. And we don't see this, am I talking with John? We don't, I don't see this envisioned as being just the city of Elkhorn. That's, I envision all, the entire county veteran groups getting involved in this. It was, if you didn't go to, it was this last year, this last summer here, it was in Franklin, Wisconsin. So it does rotate all around the country. And it's pretty worthwhile, quite moving. And it's an educational hall, so it's open 24/7. We have to have volunteers there, lights, all that. Just for something for your consideration and we can move forward later, but if you're interested in it.
I would say.
Yeah, if you can keep pursuing it, Ron, and.
Veterans organizations will start putting something together.
Good, thank you, Ron.
Yeah, no problem.
Next, discussion and possible decision regarding authorized funds in the amount of $3,999 to purchase wellness app Cortico for the police department? Everybody's seen the memorandum in the packet? Questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it at $39.99.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Motion passed for the wellness app Cortico for the police department in amount of $3,999. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding requests from the police department to amend the 2022 budget by $13,600 to equip city police officers for the Walworth County SWAT team. I know this was brought to our attention from Officer Brandle to Adam and I. And he did talk to Adam and there's some budget concern. But also, he did talk to myself and I wanted to bring it in front of council and let you guys hear and you guys make the decision of how we'd like to move forward or not. Or, and they understand that if we can't, maybe there's an opportunity. It's going to be coming open for applications, correct?
That's correct. Applications are open currently. They have to be in by October 28th. So that's why we brought it before council here, to see if this is something we want to move forward with and give an officer an opportunity to advance their training and bring some of that back to the police department.
Ken, can you talk in your, can you talk to the microphone?
Does that happen every year with the opportunities are there for an officer to go to that training?
So it's through the county, so it's up to the sheriff's department. The last, I think, three years, they have done it at least once a year, I believe. We have Sergeant Rayfield currently on the team now. He joined the team, I believe, in 2019. So he's been on the team for almost three years now.
And he, he has gone through that?
He's gone through it, yep.
Okay, okay.
So it's a, it's a one-time cost, not a annual cost for the officer that's already on it? He's, he's had the training and the equipment?
Yes, the initial startup cost of the 13,000, we're looking at as the initial setup. But every year, there's monthly trainings they're required to go to as well as obviously costs with ammunition and things like that that we have to supply.
But that's in the regular budget somewhere in there?
We would make that, yes, in the regular budget.
How does that impact us now, Adam, as far as the current budget?
Well, I mean, for, assuming it's a '22 expense, we budgeted $7,100 for uniform and clothing expense. Right now, the PD's spent about $4,600 of the $7,100. So obviously, there's, you know, not $13,000 in that line item. It's not, it's not budgeted for '23, you know, either. So, but yeah, that's where we're at for the, for the budget.
Like, just to throw it out, we are operating with 16 officers, not 17. So I don't know if there's room if we were able to make a, I guess, a different allocation from wages. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, or how that looks.
In other words, you, to look into your budget and see if you can come up with something?
Well, I think, well, I think it's there. It's just in the wages section. Because like I said, we've operated with 16 officers since August, I believe. Rockwater joined our department and we have one whole position sitting open yet.
I would just say, you know, we got this request late, honestly, right before the agenda packet was closed. So we didn't have a time to look at the budgetary impact. And unfortunately, the PD didn't provide us with a, you know, we were looking for some feedback as to suggestions as to how to pay for it, and we didn't really get that. So, you know, we can certainly look at what the impact would be if you look at the wages. I don't know, Corey.
You have to look and see. I mean, you don't know if the overtime was higher because of that being down and a officer or not, so we'd have to look to see where.
Yeah, that's, we don't know if some of the other line items are over, you know, so.
I, I think I'd like to, you know, have Corey take a look at that and possibly you. And maybe the money's there, is what I'm saying, so we don't have to make an amendment to the budget. Correct?
I think what we need tonight, though, is, because they only have till the 28th to apply and our next meeting won't be till November. So we'd need a, either a motion if the money's there to go forward or, or not.
I would make the motion to approve if we can verify the money is there.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. So if, if the money is whereward, is that how we got to put it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. Is the motion so that if the, if the staff, including Corey, eventually figures out that we already have this money, without it being an additional cost to the city, then it's approved? But if it's not, if that isn't the case, then it doesn't, then it's not approved?
That is correct.
Takes a budget adjustment, it's not approved?
That's the way I'm interpreting it.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion? Any other questions or discussion?
May I ask?
Yeah.
Just for Ken.
Yes.
It's possible that you could, I mean, right now, the way that this is drafted or the way the motion is made and seconded, if it was cost one more penny, we wouldn't approve it. Is there some range within which you want to consider?
Like a $5,000 or within, or?
Yeah, if everybody feels that.
I mean, I don't know. I just threw a number out.
Well, then $5,000 of the.
I weren't throwing out a penny. I didn't want to throw out a penny.
Because I'll give you the penny.
Where would we get that money, then?
Like $2,000, that would be kind of a, you know, just a dumb move.
I was just worried that, you know, without intending to, you'd say, oh, well, and then she gets it and it comes out to be a few dollars or something, and it's like, well, it's not approved.
Well, I would say this, if it's that close, let's schedule a special meeting before the 28th.
Well, they got to have their applications in by the 28th, so they.
Before the 28th. Today is the 17th. Can we have all our numbers before then? Yes, then if we have an issue, then call special counsel. Sure. If that's what we got to do.
So the motion stands as is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, can we go back a second? So are we just at this amount? We're not going over, or are you going over the 5,000?
No, they're not including any of that, no.
Not including any of it, but if the numbers are over, then we need to get back in here and talk about it.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Motion passed for staff to look into that. And possibly, we might have to have another meeting next Monday if it comes out different than, than what it is. Next, discussion regarding proposed 2023-2027 capital improvement plan? Anybody have any questions on that for Adam? It's all in your packet? Everything look good for everyone? Okay, move on. Discussion regarding proposed 2023 budget. Any questions on that for Adam or Corey? No? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Guess I'll make that a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll pick it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.